Good evening. Today is July 16th. The time is 6 o'clock. This is a regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Trinidad. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on the agenda is roll call.
DeBono.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Trinhel.
Here.
Ogultryn.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Riego.
Here. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody on council have any additions or corrections to the agenda? There being none, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Call the vote, please. Trinhel.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
DeBono.
Yes.
Ogultryn.
Yes.
Riego. Yes. Item number three, policy items and staff reports.
Mayor, council, we have one update for you tonight. As you all know, we experienced power outage this morning. So we have representatives from our Power and Light Department here to give you a briefing on that as to what happened and answer any questions you have. So I'd like to invite David Bichicca and Paul Pachulia to the speakers.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, council, staff. So this morning, we discovered a broken crossarm around 7:30 this morning. So it was a mainline pole that was down. It was critical, so we made the call to change it out. That pole had been downed, so.
And I think we discussed the problem. There's not a problem. There was a misunderstanding. It was not a scheduled outage.
No, no.
It was an emergency situation.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Cordova, do you have anything?
Just 6:45 this morning, I was notified about 7:30 when I got in home. Pulling into our shop, it's like the second pole over from our parking lot. One of the guys noticed that one of the phases was hanging down. And it could have been so much worse. If they would have smacked together, it could have started a fire there. It could have broke three or four poles if it would have bowled. Then people would have been out for a couple of days. What's that?
I think that was it, that's all.
Yeah. So yeah, it could have been so much worse than it actually was. We ended up changing the pole out since we were going to be that far into it. This is our mainline circuit, so there's four circuits on this, on these poles. There is no way to get into them to be able to change one arm without killing the whole thing because it is so close in proximity.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Do you have any idea what the cause of the broken crossarm was?
It could have been lightning. It could have been, I don't know what, just old age.
Just old age? You know, it's... Like I say, it could have just been so much.
Yeah, because it was old.
But this is no different than last year when that trash truck took out a pole over here on First Street. Emergency situation, it had to be taken care of. There's just no way around it. It wasn't scheduled. I did tell Safeway. I went. As I drove down, I put all the lights in flash, which street bridge followed me and put stop signs up because the lights were going to be totally out. I went to Safeway, picked up the ones for my guys, figuring I would let them know since they were a big, you know, a big part of Trinidad, that that was going to be, that we were going to have an outage this morning because of a broken pole. The lady there, she was, instead of saying thank you for letting us know, she was upset about it. So that's how that ended. I did tell the courthouse because they have a lot of scheduled stuff. When we, when we did First Street, we had such a hard time trying to schedule an outage time with the courthouse. So I figured I would be courteous and let them know that it was an emergency situation. It had to be done. And those are the only two people that I told. And like I say, Safeway, they weren't even happy about it, so. They had a heads up on it.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to point out, we did, as quickly as we could, posted on our website, social media, and let the radio station know as well.
Yeah, we put out a PSA.
Thank you for that.
Any questions first, council on? Where is this? Is it located by the power plant?
Yes, it's like.
It's right behind that denis office.
Oh, okay.
Across from Combs.
Okay.
And it's out in that field. Like I say, it's like one pole down from where our guys park.
Does our system alert you to where the problem is right where you guys have to search?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, like I say, it was a lucky thing that somebody did see it because it was hanging on by a thread. And if it would have actually hit, it could have been, like I say, 10 times worse.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate it.
Yes.
And it was clear that it didn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, we changed it all out and it's all busy on.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Anything else?
Sir? Mayor, no.
Not yet, sir. No, not yet, sir.
Not yet.
You have to sign up for petitions and communications. No other? I'm sorry, I got interrupted. Mr. Rupert, is there anything else?
Uh, Mayor, no. Nothing else to make.
Petitions and communications oral or written. I'd like to remind everybody that our hats have to be off when they're inside council chambers. Make sure that your cellphones are silenced and keep site conversations to a minimum. Okay. First one is Molly Snuck, power outage. She wants to speak about.
Hi.
Hi there.
My name is Molly Snuck. I'm a co-owner of Simpson's Local Market on Macon Street. And I'm here today to speak on the surprise power outage this morning and how it affected local businesses. We just learned that it was an emergency, which makes my comments a little bit different, but I think the gist still applies. Our sales were half of what they are on a normal Tuesday because we count on the lunch rush, which was completely stolen from us. But losing electricity is more far-reaching than just the inability to operate a cash register. Businesses have elevators that customers were in and using. We have fridges with thousands of dollars in perishable inventory. Weekly deliveries were rejected because you can't open fridge doors when the power is out. So the delivery driver just had to skip us and keep moving on to his next stop. It's extremely embarrassing for businesses when their power goes out and we have no way to explain to customers what's going on. I would certainly not be eager to go back to a town that operates on chaos. It's offensive to brush things off like this and compare it to an act of God or a storm that might take power out. Modern meteorology is pretty good at predicting storms, for one. And it's just a way for the city to absolve itself of its responsibility when it responds like, oh, treat it like a storm. While the city continues to complain about the lack of money in its coffers, the city's actions are the direct cause for businesses to lose revenue oftentimes. Every single day matters for small businesses, especially during the busy summer season. To have a local government that actively prevents our success can be extremely disheartening and discouraging. It only adds insult to injury to learn that certain businesses got an earlier heads up from the city employees. Why was Safeway notified at 7:30 a.m.? We are a grocery store. We have the same problems as Safeway. And we learned when the power went out because we weren't on Facebook at the moment that the city posted the notice. If we needed further proof that the city does not respect its businesses and their interests, let me remind you about May's power outage that the city scheduled directly during dinner service for restaurants. You would think that after that, the city would be more proactive in telling businesses about outages. Or do these changes outside of normal business hours like any other place is seemingly able to. The city neither listened to our complaints nor acknowledged its role in creating these problems. Let me be clear that posting information like this to Facebook is not giving appropriate notice to businesses, regardless of timing. If local schools can send text messages with notice about the floors being polished, the City of Trinidad can certainly inform its citizens about situations like this in a more meaningful way. There could be a simple public information service, and the citizens of Trinidad deserve such basic amenities. I would happily make and compile a database of business email addresses and phone numbers if the city would actually use it in times like these. It feels like we're failing at the easy things, which is evidence of dysfunction in our city government. Just really frustrated with today, feeling like there's nothing a business can do to prepare for something like this, even in an emergency situation. Finding out that Safeway got noticed really, really hurt. We are a grocery store. We depend on daily customers. And being closed during lunch hour was extremely bad for business today. Rejecting deliveries is something that you cannot risk in a town like this when they only come here every two weeks anyway. And so I would love for the city to just do better.
Thank you. Roy Miller?
Yeah. Give me a second.
Drainage, understood. Take your time.
Yeah, I was in here on the first of the month. I brought pictures this time, not colored, but you'll get the, you'll get the idea.
If you would pass them on, do you want council to have a copy of this?
Yeah, absolutely. I brought it up for a reason to look at it. It's just pretty straight up. I got three areas in there.
Just make sure either Mr. Downs or Mr. Rupert has a copy, please.
No, this is the Cougar Canyon area. Everybody's below Cougar Canyon. But I realize none of you was involved in building that debacle, so I'm not going to blame anybody for anything. But I do need to get some drainage fixed up there. At the end of the street, I live on Bloom Street. The asphalt stopped. The drainage was put in, the fire hydrants were put in, so we just need to dig it out to the drainage. It's just a manual labor type thing. I don't expect the city to spend a lot of money on that. And up there, up on top of the hill where Cougar Canyon Drive is, it all pools up right there because there's only two inches of asphalt laid down. They put in the storm curbs, the curved drainage. It doesn't get there because the drainage is higher, the curbs are higher than the asphalt. It just pulls up through the lake. Wish you could take us some pictures tonight because it rained pretty good up there. Okay, the third thing is that little parking area used to be the walking wagon trailer. It's by Rube Court. There's an asphalt area and everybody parks here at night. They throw their trash out, McDonald bags and all that. They do brodies out. They're spinning their cars around and all that kind of stuff. A while back to Bob, six months ago, a guy was spinning his, doing brodies with his BMW. Cut the back tire on fire. I don't know how he missed from blowing himself up with the gas tank. Would have turned him into Colonel Sanders, Esther Christie, for sure. But anyway, this car sat for about a month before I was drug out of there. That, that area with the asphalt serves absolutely no purpose, and I'm asking to put some Jersey barriers up there and close it off. Because I, you guys will have to deal with it, but I got to deal with the guys spinning brodies out there, out there partying, throwing their beer cans around, all that kind of crap all the time. You know, it's in my back door, you know, right out the, I can see it all. So I'm asking to get that thing closed up. And there's no trash diffs, no dumpsters out there, nothing. They just throw their trash out in the weeds. If anybody wants to take a guided tour, I'll be more than happy to show you. Okay? And the last thing is, when I, about a year ago, I was talking with Jordan Moll and they were going to auction off the lots out there, the housing lots, 400 lots that didn't get used. They'd auction them off, just auction them off, no property taxes, no nothing. I was going to bid on the one next to me. They all had some California moves, I think, or nothing. But the whole thing went away because the new government, you know, and so, I mean, we're talking about, you know, that thing's been up and it came to an end about 2008. It's now 2024. It's about 16 years worth of property taxes that never going to be ever paid. So if you guys want the property taxes, trying to sell them for, you know, those lots for property taxes, about $5,000 bucks, I don't foresee anybody paying that extra for those lots. I wish you guys would auction them off. I'll be right there. And I'll pay the property taxes after I own the lot. Okay? But it kind of got kicked down the road again. I realize you guys didn't build that mess. You weren't, no, you weren't part of that debacle. But it just keeps getting kicked down the road, you know? No one ever does nothing with Cougar Canyon. Nothing. I don't know what y'all plan on doing with it. I think you should have a structural fire and divide all the fire departments and burn that thing to the ground. Or...
Roy Miller, please watch your.
Or burn it to the ground. Or you can auction it off and maybe sell, tell some contractor you can have the wood out of it and just take it down and clean it up. Free wood. Something with it. It's just going to run to the ground. If anybody wants a guided tour, just let me know. I'll be more than happy to show it to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I forgot to mention at the beginning of petitions and communications, you have a five-minute limit?
Oh, okay.
You're good. You're good. I just forgot to tell you, Mr. Downs is our official timekeeper. And you'll be more than one minute in, so you're good, Mr. Miller.
Can you be to write this stuff up like a work request or something? I could do that. I used to write work requests for the Army all the time. Very seldom were they ever done, but I used to write them up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Howard Lackey, he's talking about all things river.
You're only in trouble. I got notes tonight. How are we doing?
Good, Mr. Miller.
Got a nice, cool day out there. I got to play hooky today and went fishing down along the river, so I missed all the funny games with the power outage. So anyway, I would just like to compliment the city on the trails and the marker signs. Karen Wolf has done a hell of a job down there. There, the Purgatory Watershed, Julie Knudsen's helped with that, and it's really turned that into a, quite the place. And some of you were there back 15 years ago when we started cleaning that place out. We used to measure our success in roll-offs. We now measure our cleanups in trash bags, so kudos for that. The river is looking very good. The structures put in is very good. We had our fish stocking this year. Thank Jared for getting the city to participate in buying some fish to put in for our kids program. We've had lots of happy fishermen down there, locals, folks from out of town, so it's been really neat things to watch. So I would encourage everybody to go down and take a look at it. It is something that the city can be very proud of. So for that, I would give the city a B+. More things we can do, all right? And I'm going to stay on it until we get them all done. Trails on the south side of the river up to the state park and a few other things. We still have some homeless issues, but we got them managed into one corner of it. It's one of the days I like to see no homeless in there at all compared to what we used to. It was 50, 20, 30 camps in the summer, so. That's the best. That's the good stuff. Now, the nots of good stuff. We were at our monthly cleanup set last, two Saturdays ago. And we targeted a section, a very small section, that was underneath Commercial Street Bridge. And I don't know how many of you walk the river, how many of you look over the edge to see what's going on down there. It is a mess. It's not homeless, so we don't get all excited about homeless. It's vagrants. And we have a vagrant problem and a loitering problem. And so this is something I think is directly affecting the city and what people perceive of this city. So we went down there, we cleaned it all out, we got it all nice and looking really good. And lo and behold, I recognize about five or six phases that we've been doing this for the last 10, 12 years. So that just tells me that we're not working what we need to do to make sure that that riverwalk is safe place for women, children, Chihuahuas. I don't care. We have to take a look at what's going on down there. All right, so got that all cleaned up and everything. Things are great. So go to breakfast on Sunday, park there on Commercial Street, says, I'm just going to look over the edge and see what's going on here, down there. And what do I see? Same stuff. Same stuff. So as I got rained out this afternoon, I said, I'm going to just take a little walk and see what's going on down there. So I take a walk, start getting tuned up, park, down through, there's five or six laying up against the Mason Candy Building. Walk down, there's the old Lucky Monkey, counting six people, smoking something. I guarantee you it wasn't Pampers. It was heavy stuff. Walk down the river a little further and there's people yelling at each other, fighting with each other in the middle of the river. And there's more crap down there. And if you look at it, we had it cleaned up. You go down there now, just look over there, it's trashed again. So what this does, got me thinking, I'm saying, you know, when Jay Chiumino came to Trinidad to start doing his thing about 10, 12 years ago, he participated in a couple of our community cleanups down there. And he talked to me one day about the importance of the river corridor, and I agree with him 110%.
100%.
Okay, we had a lot of disagreements on a lot of different things, but when Jay put that hotel in there, that was because the river was important to him. The other thing the city's doing, and this is your guy's job because you're the CEOs of this community, you rely on 30 to 40 people a day in Chiumino Park. The other day, a mom with three kids trying to have lunch next to that crowd. It's pathetic. And it's on your guys' heads because that's what represents Trinidad right now. That's what people take away from this community. So what I am imploring is that you guys start walking that river. Start sending your staff. Start doing whatever it needs to be, but it's got to come from the top. It's not going to come from the bottom up. It's got to be from the top down. This is an important thing for Trinidad. It's going to continue to be important. And as long as we create what we're creating there, it's going to be 16th Street, Mon, then the Lord knows, we don't want that. All right? So you guys got a lot of homework to do. This is a grade D-, okay? Now, there is extra work that you can do to get this thing up to a B, C, so you can graduate by fall. Please take my advice, get it going and get some stuff done. Go look at it. Now, 30 seconds, 30 seconds, 30 seconds.
I'm sorry.
30 seconds.
It's been five minutes.
I know. 30 seconds. I always, always have an answer for every bribe. I always have an answer, correct? Karen, very important.
Mr. Latimer.
Yes, great.
We have five minutes.
Get the police on their four-wheelers and run them down.
Mr. Apodaca, will you come in here, please, sir?
I'm done.
All right, thank you.
He would love to be on a four-wheeler down on the river, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Tim Schultz, Dakota Rod, the Trinidad Triggers.
Well, it's been a busy day when there's, let me hold on, Dakota. When there's lightning and thunder and rain, we're pretty busy. I'm trying to walk down. Anyway, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, thank you for having us. I'd like to introduce to you, excuse me, Mr. Dakota Rod. He's one of our relief pitchers for the Trinidad Triggers.
Meachell as well.
Tell them a little bit. You've been here four years.
Uh, three, yes. Yes, I would love to. I mean, he's the only team I've ever wanted to actually play for. I love the town as well. Like, I've been back seven times now in the offseason just to come and be in Trinidad. I love being here. So it's one of my favorite places. Like, I've honestly thought about looking.
Have you played on the old field?
Yes, I did. I played on the grass field as well. And so I know how today would be a day we wouldn't be able to play, ever, like, in the last two years. And they're playing right now as we speak, doing a doubleheader. So like, we had a torrential rain and we're still able to get both games, and it's absolutely amazing. That was one of the best things I've ever had happen, you know? Since I played for a team, I've played for a lot of them, and then I've said, where are you going to get that field? Didn't get it. And then showing up this year, actually seeing the field and getting pictures throughout the year, seeing it, the process of it going up was absolutely awesome.
So the city gets an A+. And I mean that truly from the heart. It's really elevated our playing time, our status, the city, your, the perspective in the baseball industry, you know, turning it serious. We're losing a lot of minor league teams across the country, so the fact that we have one here is truly fantastic. Everybody pours their heart into it, including you all. The fireworks display is something that is truly phenomenal and I'm truly proud of what it does for our community. I was just writing the zip codes for some of the ticket sales that we have a sample of. And I came across Charlotte, North Carolina, I mean, New York City, Arizona. I mean, every state in the Union that has Trinidad, whether they have family or they've heard about it. And truly, we're going to get to the point where we'll be in capacity because everybody wants to be at the ballpark. We do a broadcast stream for every game. And the, what's on the screen, you know, just the shot of the field is absolutely tremendous. We have 16 teams total, and so I look at the other 15 teams that are having streams, you're not simultaneously, and it's not even comparable. And these are, you know, teams that are San Rafael, I mean, Vallejo, I mean, we've got Bay Area, California teams. We have Bakersfield, we have Tucson, and then the Mountain Division. Trinidad just sparkles in comparison. So again, it's been a true pleasure to represent the city in that capacity, to have this brand-new field. I'll be honest, I was against the turf, but I don't know why. You know, as Dakota stated, we would have to lose. We have two games scheduled today. And the back end of that is, if we lose, I've had a team here for two nights, you know, two nights I'm down, it's great. I'm paying umpires. I'm paying umpires to travel. And of course, the team and all the expenses associated with it. So, you know, just to put them on the field is probably a $2,000 bill. And if I have to cancel a game and all of that's already in place, I mean, I don't have to spell it out. It's, you know, part of the budget. So yes, thank you for the turf. It's truly beautiful. People can spread out, the kids can play. I sit in my chair, though, I'm the luckiest person alive, truly. Is that it? Yeah, pretty much. Well, and we have six games with the double left for the season, for the regular season. And the last series, I dare say, is going to be blooded out. So come on out.
It's going to be fun.
We're fighting for it all. Yeah, we're fighting for home field advantage for playoffs, and we're in the playoffs. We just, we need to be here. So that's what we're doing. Come on out. Any questions?
We used to leave the league in right now.
That's it?
We used to leave it. Now we only have two. We have the lowest of our butts.
Yeah. All right, folks.
Appreciate it.
David Sampson with Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center.
Evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, piggyback, we partnered with the Triggers. So the last home game of the season on the 28th is going to be Military and First Responder Appreciation Night, so. And there's discounted tickets under the B-line, see if he can help us promote it and all of those kinds of things. So, but I'm here on behalf of Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center just to make sure that you guys are aware of that I'm on Commercial Street in the Champions Building. I provide services to veterans. I have a food pantry. Serve, and the number's growing every month I'm here. I've been here since March. First month, I didn't have a phone, so nobody knew I was there and nobody could call me, so. But steadily been growing. I've been out networking with everybody. And so we do everything from counseling, employment services. We, I recently addressed to the state why we don't have a Veterans Employment Representative at the Workforce Center, either here nor in Walsenburg. So if a veteran that has serious barriers to employment needs help with employment, then the Workforce Center people are good at their job, but they don't necessarily understand veterans' needs. And I was in one of those positions for seven years in Oklahoma, so I understand how important they are to the communities and how we, in that position, we network with other organizations like American Legions and the FWs. And we help with homeless vets and we help them find homes and help them use their benefits, so. And because of my experience, I'm able to do all of that here. But at the same time, the state gets a grant from the Department of Labor that pays for these positions to be filled. Normally, they're managed through Workforce Center, so we're working on that issue. We had, the mayor was at the meeting with the Department of Veterans Affairs Director, and so we brought it up to him, so. Anyway, but we'll see. Here on a positive note, just saying that I'm here to help. I have cards and flyers and just part-time now, so half-days Mondays and Fridays and all-day Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Anyway, you guys have any questions?
Mr. Sampson, if you read that literature with Mrs. Lopez, if we can put it here in City Hall or if council wants some, it'd be good to distribute it from City Hall. Alrighty, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Howlett, Chamber of Commerce. I'm trying to read your handwriting.
It's coded.
Safe, I can't read it.
I was asked for kind of three items. One was the outage today, and for that, I'd really like to thank Power Light Team. Um, good job, there was communication I think we can certainly approve, uh, but Mayor, uh, Mayor Riego, City Council, members of staff, uh, thanks for this opportunity. The other has to do with housing and the river. I continue to say this, we have housing prices, available ones do not match local wages. I know that this is a landlord with six units, and we try and have low market, we do assistance, but it breaks one's heart to turn down good people who have few options due to scarcity and extreme need. We need more housing on all ends, from infill, additional dwelling units, to large homes and everything in between. The council should be applauded for the Housing Now Initiative, because it worked, and it's the model for other rural Colorado communities, and I thank you for that. Uh, but we need to do more. We need to reclaim the river for all citizens. In order to do this, uh, we need humanely patrol the river and all the parks, to include Central, Chiumino, and Kit Carson, for the benefit of residents and visitors. The challenge is that people are living on the river, and others are taking advantage of those unhoused people, as Mr. Lackey alluded to. There seems to be two groups, the unhoused and grifters-vagrants. Many of this, of the second group are housed, and have decided they can blend in with the unhoused and be involved in illegal activities for profit. Walking, biking, and cruise patrols by our police force would help, and would better, would provide a better level of visible community engagement. Residents should know their police officers, these are good people with tough jobs. Once we reduce the grifters-vagrants, we're left with the unhoused. I've been working within this community with Brother Clay, The Way, Zion Church, and caring partners like Keep Trinidad Safe for the past six years. I was active in setting up the warming center, and I've been a night host thirteen times, which has granted me the opportunity to get to know these people on a different level. And many of these folks are good people with serious problems, but not throwaways. I'm a fourteen-year Air Force veteran, and so I do this for veterans, because I don't believe we welcome them back with the resources of any who come back broken, deserving need. So I want to, again, encourage city leaders to pull together the organization to provide a sanctioned, safe campground away from the river. And in that sanctioned space, we would also have rules of conduct for entry. We would provide space for mental health and drug counseling. If you don't follow the rules, you'll be removed and subject to policing. Follow the rules and you get the help you need. I do not believe in if you save one person is worth a thinking. I believe there are consequences to our actions, but there also should be rehabilitation, and that choice should be made available. The organizations who do this are already here, funding is available, especially in the opioid drug front. I'm committed to continue helping bring a success model used elsewhere that would cost our community less than the current situation. Uh, on a different note, this has to do, um, with today's event. The Chamber would really like to help the city, um, improve communication with our local business community, members and non-members. We have our system, we have outreach, and so, we're there to help, and we wish to maybe work a little closer with the city on that. And lastly, to the city manager Steve Ruger, I am going to personally and professionally miss you. Um, you did good work here, and I wish you all the best going forward, and thank you.
Thank you.
Megan Creach, Communication Issues and Power Outage.
Hello, I'm Megan. I own Muti Trinidad on Main Street. Um, I came here today because I was really disappointed in how this power outage was communicated. Facebook is not an effective way for the city government to communicate with its citizens. It's just not. Not everyone has Facebook, not everyone checks Facebook. Twenty percent of people over the age of sixty-five don't have a smartphone, so if they lose power and they don't know what's going on, they can't check their phone, they can't go to Facebook, they can't, they would have to get on a computer. There were things that were really overlooked, um, that were concerns for people's health. Um, people had to be evacuated from the building, because they were unaware of a power outage that would affect their elevator, um, and this person was wheelchair-bound. Um, so, I've been very frustrated as a business owner that that was what happened. I understand that it wasn't a scheduled event, and that things happen. After hearing the gentleman speak about how it came, how they came to find out, I have even more concerns that, A, they, there aren't checks and balances on these big, important things. I don't know anything about the electrical grid. Um, and that it was a fluke that they've even noticed, that it was going to potentially cause even more damage. That seems not cool. That doesn't seem like that's how that should run. It should, um, you mentioned, Ms. Riego, uh, do you get notified when these things go down? Obviously, that's something that can happen, but given that I, we have very old infrastructure, I'm very concerned that this is going to be more, there are going to be more occurrences like this. So, that was not really, um, as uplifting as I had hoped from them. I also heard then that we knew as early as six forty-five AM. And that Safeway and the courthouse were told about it by seven thirty. Yet, so many people didn't know until it happened, or at the very earliest, nine AM, when it was posted to, again, Facebook. Facebook and the radio, there has to be something else that the city can do to alert people. I imagine we have an emergency response system, something that if something big was happening in town, you would be able to communicate to the citizens. Why wasn't that used? Is it in place? I feel like it's a real failure on the city's part with the communication with this. And luckily, I only lost, you know, two hundred dollars' worth of coffee beans. I didn't get stuck in an elevator, and I didn't lose my oxygen tank. So, I would just really appreciate the city really thinking about how it communicates these kinds of things, because it's very important, and Facebook can't be it, that's, that can't be the way that it's done. It's just not, it, it doesn't feel, um, professional. So, uh, thank you, very kind.
Thank you.
Mr. Richard Mastis, who I know is the city manager of Raton. You picked a really good night to enjoy.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give you my, my business card. Thank you, sir.
Mayor and the city council and city administration, um, I would just like to, uh, talk to you about a few events that we are planning that are coming up. One of the, first of all, in October eleventh, and, I'm sorry, October tenth and eleventh, we are planning to have a Summit of Governments and an Economic Development Summit in Raton. Now, the, the Summit of Governments, we would like to have members of the city council attend. We want to talk about interstate issues that we have. For example, Trinidad, Raton, Colfax County, and Los Anamos County, um, received a Department of Transportation grant uh, to do technical assistance, to look at transportation issues in the region. And I've been working with the city manager here, the county manager of both Colfax and Los Anamos County, in looking at things such as the airport, uh, the rail system, roads, trails, and everything else. And this technical assistance grant will help us apply for other grants from the Department of Transportation to do improvements to the region. So, these are just like some of the other issues, for example, another, uh, issue is that now with Fisher's Peak State Park, uh, we are looking at a way that we can connect Sugar Ridge State Park in New Mexico to Fisher's Peak State Park, where we can have a bi-state park. If we're successful in doing this, this will only be the fifth bi-state park in the United States. And this would be a great, uh, economic opportunity for both sides of the border. So, um, I really appreciate, um, your consideration to come to this event in October. Again, it's October tenth and eleventh, I keep wanting to throw in the twelfth, but the twelfth's my birthday. And, you know, so we could all start working collaboratively, collaboratively on some of these issues that impact both sides of the border. You have any questions? Thank you.
I'm putting this on my card.
Just keep us informed via the. Next. Speaker is Carlos Lopez, he's wanting to speak about Trinidad.
Hello, councils, uh, mayor, staff, everyone out there. Uh, just want you to know, I submitted a letter earlier today to be read for the record. I was out of town for a doctor visit for, we're expecting a little one, so we have these prenatal visits. And I submitted this letter, because I didn't think I'd be able to be here in time. But I was informed, uh, once I submitted this letter to, uh, city manager Steve Ruger, also Ms. Riego, and to Ms. Desiree Sambal, to make sure that it got to your desk. And I texted Ms. Riego to inform her that I wouldn't be able to make it, and please read it. She later informed me in a text that she would not read it. And that can be discussed later, but I made sure to get here in time. I'm not gonna be here after, because I have to go and hunch up on my dogs, they've been gone since yesterday. So, anyway, I'm gonna read my letter, because it would not be read for me when I submitted it. Dear Mayor and City Council, my name is Carlos Lopez, and I'm a co-owner of Fisher's Peak Outfitters located at three oh four West Main Street in downtown Trinidad. I would like to address a couple of topics that concern the health of our business and our community. First, I would like to make a comment about the unsanitary conditions along the Riverwalk. Occasionally, I volunteer with the Purgatory River Watershed Partnership to clean up trash and debris alongside our river corridor. This effort is handled by volunteers, because it's not being accomplished by our city staff. As a result of this monthly volunteer effort, the volunteers have been noticing more encampments that are extremely unsanitary in areas proximal to the Riverwalk itself. This has a negative impact on a public space during our busiest tourist season in an area that we tout as a recreational amenity. I had worked hard years ago towards an initiative to place our homeless in a fully funded facility that had mental health, drug rehab, and personal development assistance. This initiative fell on deaf ears, and now here we are seeing the behaviors continuing in the same manner as before. I ask that more, uh, camping provisions be initiated in these public access areas, and the task force that's to assist those, uh, homeless are supported by public resources. I think you all know that Detective Lay was working on an initiative recently with the Police Department, Emily. Secondly, I would like to bring to light the poorly communicated power outage that many of the business owners and residents experience today. There was not a proper notification given to the business owners, and a Facebook post doesn't count as a notification. We noticed a tremendous loss in revenue today compared to the same exact Tuesday last year. We have had an abysmal day compared to one that was lucrative and crucial to paying our staff and other necessary bills. The laissez-faire attitude that businesses don't need every single hour in their business operations is disrespectful to those who contribute to the sales tax and general coffers of the city. We are the ones who help pay staff salaries, and we are treated as if we are being greedy. I wish the same level of compassion and respect for our businesses were allocated to all business owners. We always have to roll with the punches and accept it, and that is not acceptable. And these occurrences happen frequently, it's not like this is once or twice. Emergencies occur, but they happen frequently, and that's why I'm here. I'll get back to my letter. I'm submitting the discrepancy amount of money lost today due to the power outage compared to last year, and I ask that the city compensate us for this. We have a loss of over seven hundred and twenty-five dollars compared to last year. We ask that this be paid to Fisher's Peak Outfitters as soon as possible. If this doesn't occur, we will start paying our city taxes and notate that they are paid under protest, so that the state of Colorado will start paying attention to what is going on in Trinidad. And, oh, it sounds beneficial. Respectfully submitted, Carlos Carlos Lopez. Now, I submitted this letter earlier, and I was informed that it would not be read into the public record. And that is disheartening, because I've been in your seats. I know what it's like sometimes when you gotta roll with the bad punches too, it's not always rainbows and sunshine.
One minute.
With that being said, I am very disheartened to find in a text that a mayor would not read my letter into the public record. And as a result of that, I officially would like to file an ethics complaint for lack of that duty. I have a right to have an oral or written petition, and as a result, I had to get here sooner. I've got other things going on, and that is not, that's not the American way. Thank you so much. Oh, I won't stick around for your report later, because I gotta get home, sorry.
Item five, consent agenda approval. Item five A, approval of the regular minute, meeting minutes of July second, twenty twenty-four, and special meeting minutes of July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Item five B, approval of bills totaling nine hundred and two thousand eighty-two dollars and three cents. Item five C, approval of payroll from July sixth, twenty twenty-four through July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Trinell?
Yes.
Uncle Trin?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Riego? Yes. Item six A, preparing for consideration of ordinance, revising the Trinidad Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, Land Use Code Sections fourteen dash thirteen, fourteen dash twenty-three, fourteen dash twenty-eight, fourteen dash thirty-two, fourteen dash thirty-nine, and fourteen dash forty-two. The public hearing is now open. Good night, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. So, this is, uh, the land use code, this is the second reading of the land use code update. Uh, we took, so staff took, uh, this initial, um, recommendations to Planning Zoning Commission, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Um, we worked with them, got some feedback, it came back with some formal recommendations, and on the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, um, Planning Zoning Commission, Variance Commission meeting, uh, they approved the formal recommendations, so, um, this is just some land use code updates, um, a couple of them are little minors, kind of minor stuff that kind of slipped through the cracks over time. And that would mean a setback in the eve, those two kind of, they do cause issues for us a little bit as a staff, but cleaning that up will really help us, um, use the code appropriately. Some more made files, the limited impact review, that was, that came out of, we were going to define it, make it more definite, the land use code that the site plan for a project is a permitted use, they do not have to go to limited impact review. Um, there's been a couple, or there's been a case where we kind of went to, we went to the Planning Zoning Commission, and everybody's kind of looking, saying, this is permitted use, why are we here? It doesn't quite make sense, so, um, we're trying to clean that up, because it's permitted use, you shouldn't have to go to the Planning Zoning. We also have, uh, we're adding, uh, the city manager has the capability to waive the concept review in the major impact. Uh, so if you guys remember, we've had a couple of major impact reviews, we had a concept review prior to that. But there's some things that happen in the major impact review that, um, like vacation, stuff like that. It's not really necessary, because it doesn't add to the process. Now, there's, there's definite times for concept review, when we have, uh, um, other, you know, major projects going on, but vacate doesn't really, the concept review doesn't add that, so we're gonna add the city manager can waive that. The major one's going to be the subdivision exemptions. Um, this is kind of common in most municipalities, they have some exceptions for subdivisions. Um, and it's just, this allows, um, cities, the city staff to get feedback on some of these minor subs, without having to go through a full subdivision, um, process, in which case it's public identification, there's a lot of extra steps. Sometimes it's just a lot lighter than nation, something minor like. Sometimes it's just a lot of land renovation, something minor like this, or might amend your plan. So that's probably the bulk of this one, of this actually. The last one is adding definitions for the zone districts for the historical preservation, mixed use, and historical preservation residential. We have those on our land use map, our zoning map, but there's never been any definitions in the code itself. So those definitions just kind of describe what you expect in that, in those zoning. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Naaman, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
No.
Is he like, why does it affect how changes?
Yeah, it's sort of, it just helps a little bit, but yeah, really good tweaks.
Any questions from the audience? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, mayor. I noticed Michael was online. I wanted to ask, Michael, are you familiar with all of these, and do you have any concern?
Well, you know, the planning commission act, we spent two meetings and really went through these, that we're seeing as a result of the use of the new code and the new process. The only thing I would add, I think Nick did a great job of explaining everything, just on the concept review waiver by the manager. I just want to ensure that you understand that, that just means it's not waiving any kind of, a different public hearing. That's the informal meeting. The application would then just proceed directly to a public hearing in front of the planning commission, and then the council. So it's just, it's just basically allowing the applicant to move through the process a little quicker, but it eliminates just the informal meeting, that there's still two public hearings on any major impact. So to clarify that, but I think Nick did a great job explaining. And we had a couple of things to just clean up, and then a couple of them are trying to make the code more business friendly to continue, to get people in, city over business, and get people through the land use process. So I agree with the planning zoning and variance commission, the time they put in, they did a really thorough job on this amendment. So I appreciate their time, and also the council's time considering this.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Nick. And mayor, I have no further questions.
Anybody in the audience to speak on the, sure, thank you, the ordinance changes for the land use code? There being no further comments, the hearing is closed. Item six A1, second reading of an ordinance revising the Trinidad Municipal Code, Chapter 14, Land Use Code Section 1413, 1423, 1428, 1432, 1439, and 1442. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There, second. Second? Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Ogultrin?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Griego? Yes. Item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight A, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, determining that an election is required to submit to the voters one or more referred measures, and that such election should be held as a coordinated election. Who is speaking on that? Anybody?
Shu. Yeah. I'm going to actually speak on it. In my office. So this resolution is the act of the city notifying the county that we wish to participate in the November election. The only item that is anticipated to go in front of the voters this year would be the lobbying tax initiative, once again, to see if the voters have gotten better information and have changed their heart with respect to increasing the lobbying tax, so that the city can put out those funds towards immunity enhancement. And so this is basically first step. Next step will be for the city council to adopt the ordinance setting the ballot title, and that ordinance will come to you in August. And then September release, December would be when we need to certify the ballot content to the county, and it is a paper issue, so we will have to provide information so that a paper notice can also go out to voters.
Thank you, Audrey. Any questions from the council?
Yeah.
Naaman?
No.
Mr. Williamson, you have any questions?
No question, mayor.
All right. I need a motion to approve the resolution. So moved. Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogultrin?
Yes.
Griego? Yes. Item eight B, extraterritorial three-quarter inch water tap request from Jennifer Radlin, 9850 Santa Fe Trail Drive. Morning. Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Before I begin, I know I have a few new councilperson. I'd just like to start out with, before we bring an extraterritorial water tap request, we have a water tap application request checklist that we give all the applications, and all these have to be met prior to bringing these councils for approval. The first one is they have to show proof of ownership, a deed to the property with legal scriptures stating that they own the property, a copy of a building permit from Los Angeles County stating that they are indeed planning on putting up a building there, a letter of approval from the county planner, a survey plat or drawing of what they'll be doing, a copy of individual disposal system permit, a signed copy showing that they have a septic system, because these are all extraterritorial taps, so most of them are outside the city limits, a signed and notarized water tap application that they filled out, a lightweight easement applicable, and payment of appropriate fees following approval with city council. So prior to me bringing these forth for council's approval, all of these have to be met even before I bring them to you. Okay. So the first one is for consideration of approval from the city council for three-quarter inch water tap request from Jennifer Radlin, who is also present, to service the storage container used for dog boarding, grooming, exercise, and retail in 9850 Santa Fe Trail. The location is just south of Tequila's, you know, where the, is it Penny Lane Antique Store? She owns that. It's directly south of that, where she has a boarding and grooming station. I believe you've been hauling water there, correct? And she's been using that in the meantime, so she's requesting a commercial water tap in order to move forward without having to keep hauling water. Shu will be tied into the Pinon Water and Sanitation District, correct? And she's already got approval, and that's already in place, right? Correct. So all she needs to move forward is a water tap to continue. So that's what we have for consideration for council right now.
All right, sir. Naaman, do you have any questions?
Not familiar with her operation, and she's been there for a long time, so I know a little bit about her setup. And so it's happening.
Mr. Trinhel. Mr. Shu.
On the county commissioner's resolution, there are some requirements that Ms. Radlin has to meet. One of them is that the aesthetics of the building be addressed within a year. And I'm curious what the applicant intends to do with, because they're like storage units, correct?
Correct. They're storage containers, and what we're going to do is unglash them and paint them. They just have so many layers of paint and stickers on them, so that's what I'm working with now. We found some local car dealers here that might actually help me out on that, and then we'll paint that. The old antique store, basically, we've got to do asbestos checks to take that down. So that will work towards our appearance move.
Are you going to have to do any landscaping, or paving, or anything like that?
Eventually, we will. Right now, I'm working with CDOT to get their approval, because I am right on the access road. They actually want to have a fence that goes around my property, and so that we will have one way in and one way out. And that will have, we definitely will put gravel there after we do French drains. But right now, we're just waiting for that water to come in, so we can get the kennels washed, and the dogs.
In your estimation, or your expertise, Mr. Behill, do you feel that Ms. Radlin has met all the requirements and criteria for?
She has. Another thing I would like to give you is that that pipeline ties on by the Garrett Group Tower 64. It's an eight-inch water main, and it deadends by the, I forget the name of the last hotel, so, right before the.
By Jup.
Yeah. There's only three water taps on there right now. One is the port of entry, Wendy's, and the marijuana shop right next to Wendy's. So we have a low volume of water being consumed off of that pipeline, so we have to flush that dead-end main quite often, waste a lot of water. So adding additional water tap on it would actually help us to conserve water and not waste it.
Would that avoid the problem of having to wash it out?
Some of it. Well, we stepped it, because it's an eight-inch main, and there's only three current taps, and not big water users are the ones that are on it. So yeah, it would help.
I need a motion to approve item eight B, water tap request from Ms. Radlin at 9850 Santa Fe Trail Drive.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultrin?
Yes.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Griego? Yes. Item eight C, extraterritorial one-inch water tap request from Kelly Rivera at 37650 County Road 32.4. And you've got the floor, Mr. Behill.
Okay, here I have another one. This is for consideration and approval from city council for a one-inch water tap request from Calibert to service a new residential modular house. He is planning on having a home built for his daughter and son-in-law there, so it'll be a residential water tap. He's requesting a one-inch rather than a three-quarter inch, because he lives nearby, and he's noticed that if he's in the shower and somebody flushes it to her, decides to wash clothes, you have a little volume loss. So that's why, and one-inch and three-quarter are both considered residential. So a lot of people have sprinkling systems and put one-inch just to carry the extra volume. So it's just for a new residential water tap. It's located on the old Almar Road, off the Almar exit. And it's also on an eight-inch water main, which deadends. He put the dispensing station in, and that helps us use our water instead of waste there. It's on that same line, so that would be beneficial to have an additional cap on that right now, too.
All right, sir. Thank you. Mr. Williamson, I'm asking you first, because I keep forgetting you. I apologize.
Thank you, mayor. I have no questions on this, mayor. Thanks.
Naaman, do you have any questions?
No questions. No question.
Mr. Shu?
No, mayor.
I have no questions, except for the same line I asked you.
Sure.
It's the same situation. There are all the requirements have been met. You have no hesitation?
None. I have the folders with me, with all the paperwork in place.
All right, sir. Thank you. I need a motion to accept the water tap request from Mr. Kelly Rivera. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Call the vote, please, for the second. I think it was CDOT.
This is awesome.
Oh, it's. You made the motion? Yeah. Brandon made the motion. Manny made the second. Ready? Call the vote. Ogultrin?
Yes. Trinhel?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego? Yes. Item nine, council reports. Start with you, Ms. Ogultrin. Do you have anything?
Sure. I had a chance to meet with the Trinidad Golf Association last Wednesday. I went to the meeting. The golf course is doing well this summer. Guido, who manages the grounds, has been able to correct some of the problems that were with the putting surfaces, and it's looking a lot better. In talking with them, they were interested in what the city is planning to do about the consultant's report, and I told them that we had not made the decision, and that, but that it would not, only because, Mr. Riversley, that wouldn't mean that we were not going to go forward or consider it. But I'm also encouraging them to let the city know what they liked about it, what they would want to partner with us towards to accomplish, because we need to hear from them. And I took a tour of the golf course with Guido on Monday, and that was really helpful, because I hadn't seen the whole thing, and we got a sense of the land of the South, that the consultant talked to us about the possibility of purchasing and expanding to another nine holes, and that I think would be, I personally think would be a great idea, and I think it would make that course much more a tourist draw and a place that people from Trinidad would use. So all that was really good. Arts and Culture Group, that, I was not able to attend that, but they're moving right along. Baseball glove sculpture is in the works, and raccoon bench will be installed in Central Park soon. It's almost complete. She just has another kind of paint to do, and I think people will think that it's cute and unique, and it certainly is by a local artist. They also reviewed their strategic plan that they had come up with the last few years, and they're following it. I think that board is doing very well.
Thank you. You know, if you have anything to report.
Just something from the Los Angeles County Veterans Council. They're hosting a spaghetti dinner in behalf of Rick Gonzalez, whose meets travel expenses for a transplantation process. It's from 11:00 to 3:00 on Sunday, and adults, $15 for the spaghetti dinner, and children, $10, and that's for Rick Gonzalez. And the Veterans Council is nice enough to have four of them host that, so.
I have nothing to report. Man, I care of anything.
My meeting was canceled, so I'll go to the farmer market. And I do highly encourage anybody to go. It is a great little place to be. And there's a tamale bag there that is. That's all I have.
Here it is. Mr. Thurman?
Nothing to report. We're just still in the pickleball phase, so everybody knows what that's about, so we'll talk about that later.
Mr. Williamson, do you have anything to report for council reports? I think I lost him. He just joined again. Well, I'll go on with my council report. I didn't have much, because the board that I participated in for city council and lodging tax advisory board had that joint meeting with the public, and I don't remember if I reported on that, but I sat and listened, and it was very interesting. Mr., former mayor Rico and I had the pleasure of eating lunch and hosting General David Doyle from Fort Carson, along with his wife, Renee. And he's a very nice individual, loves Trinidad. Mrs. Doyle, it was her first time in Trinidad, and she had the same response that everybody does when they see downtown Trinidad. She just thoroughly loved downtown Trinidad. And they got to see a bird's eye view of it, because they were in a horse-drawn carriage, so it was very nice. And it was, I got to see the same group of soldiers that marched in the military appreciation parade, and very nice young people. I also got a letter from the Noah's Ark Board of Directors, who includes Candace Welch, Paula Manini, and Debbie Anderson. It said, "Dear Mayor, Karen, and Graydon Council, This $1,000 donation from Noah's Ark Animal Welfare Association is for the City of Trinidad Animal Shelter. The funds come from individual donors, Noah's Ark Thrift Store, and our countertop donation boxes, which are located at several businesses. We would like to acknowledge the ever-expanding number of businesses participating in the." We would like to acknowledge the ever-expanding number of businesses participating in the donation box program, which provides ongoing support for the Trinidad Animal Clinic, I'm sorry, Animal Shelter. The businesses are Builder Supply, Body Resilient Massage, Cedar Printing, Fisher's Peak Outfitters, Fisher's Peak Bed Clinic, Grago Insurance, Hops and Vines Litter Store, Natural Food Store, New View Dispensary, Tales End Grooming Salon, Trinidad Animal Clinic, Trinidad Gardens Dispensary, Trinidad Greenhouses, Trinidad Smokehouse, and Tootie Scoops Ice Cream Shop. So the ladies are, because the shelter cannot, because we're a municipality, it's our way of getting nonprofit donations in support of the shelter. I have nothing to address. Oh, I just wanted to mention, you'd I mentioned, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez is the animal control officer for the City of Trinidad, and because of COVID, he needs a double lung transplant. He and his wife have to live in Denver for 12 weeks with no income, so they're trying to get money for them to live off of the 12 weeks that he's in the hospital. She told me today she has to sign a one-year contract with the University of Colorado to provide care to him for one year, or they will not perform the transplant. So if any of you can go by and just lend your support, Mr. Gonzalez is a great employee for the City of Trinidad. I had the opportunity to work with him when I was on the Noah's Ark Board, and he truly is a compassionate and caring man, and we hope the best for him. So I think we're done. Did I ask you, Mr. Williamson, do you have anything?
Uh, you did not. I would just like to take a minute, if I may. I want to address this situation is, you know, I think it's important, especially in the day and age we live in. Email obviously is important, we all know that, and so what modern businesses run on in the City of Trinidad was without email for 10 or 11 days. And I mean, it finally was resolved, but I did want to just say thank you to several individuals for working so tirelessly on it. Our IT director was, you know, tirelessly worked on it for 11 days to get that back on. I'm certain at some point the city manager would have been involved, after all, email's really important, so the city manager, I would presume, would pursue that and ensure that it was brought on in a timely manner. But the person I really, really want to thank here was our city attorney, who with one phone call conveyed the urgency of the situation and rectified the misunderstanding that we had not paid, and in short, in about the span of 30 minutes, brought the 11 days of email absence to an end. So I just want to really say thank you to those people involved, and point out that maybe Les could have a second career in 19, since he.
That's funny.
Since he proved obviously instrumental in jumping those two instrumental hurdles. Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. City Attorney Report, do you have anything, sir?
Um, do you have anything, sir? Did we, I mean, brought?
I have just a couple of things, yeah.
Yeah. He usually goes first, I'll go first.
Okay, I just, you know.
Yeah, you want me to go first?
I go from the bottom to the top.
Okay, yeah. So here's what the bottom looks like, people.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, so, no, no, it's just very quickly, I will save my legal discussions for our executive sessions coming up after the meeting. I just want to say that I went to the Art Fest this weekend, and I know you're all thinking, well, good for you, but I want to say it was wonderful. And lest I be accused of not like giving them props when I, you know, talk about Santa Fe Trail guys and how wonderful that was, the Art Festival was wonderful. And I want to tell you that I went to a number of booths, and never mind why I was telling everybody that I was from here, I mean, it's a long story, they were asking me, and just anyway, just don't ask why, but everyone I talked to was raving about Trinidad, and they also were raving about the event organizers. And they said, they come back here every year, they will continue to come back here every year, the people who have this event going, that do this event, take very good care of them, and wherever they go, whatever they do, this is their favorite place to go, and they really just love participating in that. And it was just, it was a lot of fun, it was hotter than Haiti's, it was tough, you know, and I don't know what their turnout was, but it was a really neat event, really nice location, it was, you know, nice to have that on Main Street, and it was just more prominently, you know, visible and all that kind of stuff. So it was just a wonderful event, and I encourage all of you next year to go, if you're some inclined. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, council, just a couple of things. So we have a TPR meeting coming up next week, so I just wanted to remind everyone of that, some important things on the radar, so that's our transportation review committee with CDOT. And then we also have our strategic planning follow-up and finalization next week as well, so just want to make sure that's on everyone's radar. Central Park, we are thrilled to have it finally to the point where we're ready to talk about ribbon cutting, so we'd really like to have that ribbon cutting happen during the trigger season, so they can be a big part of that and really celebrate the team themselves. So more information to come, but we are targeting Friday, the 26th, which would be a week from this Friday, to do a ribbon cutting there, and would like to see as many of you there as possible to really celebrate that, that room for our community. And then likewise, First Street as well, we're putting the final touches on that, I talked with Mr. Just today, it just needs some striping, and will be done, so we'll be looking at scheduling a ribbon cutting for that as well. We did receive our grant award for our Prop 123 funding, which will pay for a staff member to help us with housing, but more importantly, that staff member will be assigned to really be the staff liaison and member for TORA, and offer them some administrative support. So we really expect that position to become well-versed on urban renewal authorities, and really kind of be the expert, and be able to advise TORA on what they can do, and really hopefully expand their operations a little bit. And then last but certainly not least, 4th of July was a very great success this year. I was here for all of it, got to be in the water parade, which was a blast with Manny, so we had a good time, got soaking wet, went to the Triggers game that night, and Ms. Schultz is correct, the terraces that we built, there were kids running around, really, really enjoying themselves, and it's just, it was very heartwarming to see our community have a very special place to enjoy. The fireworks were sensational, the weather cooperated, and I really just want to take the opportunity to thank all of the city staff, in particular our fire department, who were there, some of them for 14-hour days, really helping make sure everyone was safe, and that, I don't know if you all know this, but it's actually our firefighters who put on the fireworks display. So that's not normal, and it's really something that we're very fortunate to have crews that are willing to do that, so I want to give them a special thanks, but all of our staff who planned everything for 4th of July and was involved in that, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Item 11 is executive session, item 11A, for a conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4 to 4B, boards and commissions. I need a motion to go into executive session. So moved. Second? Call the vote, please. Thurman?
Yes.
Trinell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson? He's gone again. There he is. There he is.
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Debono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
There will be no vote after the two executive sessions wrapped here back-to-back. Let's take a break until 7:30, and we'll reconvene at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Chorito.